What? I was totally dying. Okay, but that's a great experience that I actually like for medical reasons.
What do you know?
I'm getting paid.
Well, in charge of like.
Yeah.
Well, it all comes down to the government's needs. But those bad things like the worst threats, these fire operating requirements, checking everything. Because that's like, people get on it and they think it's right, but then it's important to be on it forever, which will not be a system.
So.
So.
She's almost right. I am. It feels bad, can't we ask? You should probably give us more.
Yeah, you'll be fine.
Yeah, you'll be okay.
Yeah.
You got us behind time, I'm so sorry. That's what I was having in there talking.
Come in and listen. He's like Jimmy Thing, he's taking off. He just gave him the.
We'll call to order the Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, November the 13th, 2025. Our invocation will be done by the esteemed Pastor James Harper of First Presbyterian Church of Douglasville, and then we'll have our Pledge Allegiance, which will be led by the Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller. Please stand for the invocation.
It's good to see y'all. Let me just compliment somebody. I'm not sure who's in charge of Christmas lights around this city, but whoever it is does a fantastic job, and I really appreciate y'all making that possible. I mean, I love the city in any way, but this time of year, it just looks really awesome. So, thank you for that. Well done. Let me pray for you. Lord God, we come tonight with thankful hearts, thankful to recognize all the ways that we are blessed people. We have an abundance, and we're just grateful for that. We pray that you would teach all of us to live out of that abundance with grateful hearts and grateful eyes and grateful actions. Thank you for the staff of this city and for the way they labor behind the scenes and just do great work, and I pray that they would have all the resources and provisions and stamina they need for the work, and I pray they find joy in that. I thank you for these elected leaders and for their desire to seek the best for this city. And I pray that you would, tonight, give them all the wisdom they need. We know we are limited in our understanding and limited in knowledge and limited in power, but you have no limitations. I pray that you would give them all they need, tonight, to do their work well and to follow you well and seeking the good that you have for this community. And we pray these sayings in Christ's name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for leading us in the pledge, and thank you Pastor Harper for those beautiful words of encouragement and thanksgiving. Hopefully, we're all paying attention. It was very inspiring. My name's Rochelle Robinson. I'm mayor of the city of Douglasville. I'd like to welcome you to the Douglasville Legislative Work Session. This is a work session where agenda items are presented for discussion only, and no official action will be taken tonight. Official action will be taken, however, on Monday at our 6:00 PM voting meeting. If the business you're here for is not listed as an agenda item, there will be ample time under the agenda item comments from citizens and delegates for you to discuss your business. There are a few protocol items I need to make you aware of before we start the meeting this evening. I ask that you please listen closely, so there will be no misunderstanding on how the meeting will be conducted this evening. I ask that you please keep your comments and presentations on a professional level, dealing with the facts that are important for this governing body to make our decisions. We will not accept comments that are considered by the chair to be of a personal attack on any individual or group of individuals. You will receive a warning from the chair if you deviate from this requirement. A second deviation will result in a request for you to leave the premises. Only one person speaking at a time. Please do not applaud, react to speakers, speak from the audience, cheer or carry on a conversation with others, or be disruptive in any way in the meeting. When you're at the podium, please address your concerns and comments to myself or the committee chairperson. I'll remind you that we are only required to accept public comments during the required public hearings. We do not accept public comments during, after the public hearing portion. We accept public comments on the items that we feel is ample. Let me see, but we remain in order. If you have any items that you would like to discuss that are not part of the public agenda, just comments from citizens and delegates, please don't bring up items that were discussed during the public hearing portion. If you have a cellphone or electronic device, we ask that you please put those in silent mode or turn those off until after the meeting, so they will not be disruptive. This is how the agenda items will be handled. The committee chairperson will read their agenda item. Then that person representing that agenda item or applicant will make his or her presentation. Myself and council members will possibly ask questions to help us receive the information so that we can make a decision on Monday when we vote. After that, committee chairperson will ask for comments or statements from the audience. If this is a public hearing, there is 20 minutes for those in favor, 20 minutes for those in opposition, and each person has five minutes to speak. If you'd like to speak, please fill out a speaker card. They're blue cards, and you can hand them to the Assistant City Manager to my left, Ms. Karen Callen. She will give them to the Clerk's Office to Ms. Candace James, our Assistant City Clerk, and she will put that information into the official record. Prior to approaching the podium, of course, fill your name and address out. When you come to the podium, you should restate. I know you filled it out on the form, but we ask that you would please say, "My name is so-and-so, and this is my address for the record." Each person has one opportunity to speak. This is not question-and-answer format or debate going back and forth, but a formal format that gives you an opportunity to make public comments. And if you need some information to follow-up, staff will respond to you later. I think that's it. If you have any printed material, please give that to our city clerk, and she will make copies and disseminate it to us. Now, during the comments from citizens and delegates, we will not address zoning items. Those should have been discussed during the public hearing, so we ask you not to bring those items back to us. Section for those public hearings, allow those comments outside of public hearing violates the Georgia State Zoning Procedure Act. So again, if you have information that you'd like to talk to us about during public zoning, do that at that time, but don't rehash and bring that information back at the end of the meeting. I know that's a whole lot of information I just said. Hopefully, we're all on the same page. We do have printed copies. If you'd like to have a paper copy outside of the agenda, if not, you can follow me on the screens or screens around the room. So now, we will move on. Let's see, we do a fresh refresh for our meeting. And the first committee is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Council Member Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Finance Committee is chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight under finance.
Thank you so much. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Housing and Community Affairs. That is chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Housing and Community Affairs Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. So now, we do have business under Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee, and that's chaired by Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We do have several items under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this point.
Yes, sir.
First is to consider an action by motion to terminate the lease agreement between the Douglasville Convention and Conference Center Authority and the city of Douglasville for properties known as 6697 and 6701 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia 30134, being as known as tax parcels, parcel numbers 0016015C017 and 0016015C014, conditioned upon the affirmative vote of Douglasville Convention and Conference Center Authority to terminate the lease agreements. And our powerhouse team of Chelsea Jackson and Miranda Jordan will fill us in on those details.
I like that powerhouse.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Chelsea Jackson, 6695 Church Street. Currently, the Douglasville Convention and Conference Center Authority owns the properties at 6697 Church Street, which is the Douglasville former, Douglasville Wellness Center for the city employees, as well as 6701 Church Street, which is currently the City Hall Annex, which houses the IT Department and Community Relations Department for a few more days. As you know, these properties are part of the footprint of the proposed City Hall construction project. This item will terminate the current lease agreement between the Authority and the city of Douglasville. On November 6th, the Authority met and approved to terminate the lease, and attached, you will see, a signed resolution to transfer the property if council approves the termination of the lease. This is all housekeeping to ensure that we take the proper steps to transfer all properties within those footprints, as well as those parcels, to start the construction for the new City Hall project. And I can answer any questions that you all may have.
Okay, and just to be clear, so folks understand, those functions that were in those existing buildings will be folded into the new City Hall when that's constructed, so that we won't lose those spaces. Open the floor for any questions or comments from members of council or the mayor? It seemed to be pretty straightforward. No questions? Okay. Then I will move on to the next item, which I think the two of you both have as well. And that is adopt a resolution to accept title to the properties known as 6697 and 6701 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia 30134, from the Douglasville Convention and Conference Center Authority by warranty deed. And Ms. Jackson and Jordan again.
Yes, so this item goes along with the previous item. This is a resolution for the city to accept the title of the properties at 6697 Church Street and 6701 Church Street. And it's from the Convention and Conference Center Authority, and it will be by warranty deed. And this is also part of housekeeping to ensure that we obtain and accept the title of those parcels for the new construction of City Hall.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Councilwoman Miller? You look like you're about to say something.
No, I was just wondering if we could place them on the consent agenda.
Oh, I will take that under advisement as I read the third item on here.
Thank you, kind sir.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Okay, and then the last item is under Legislative and Intergovernmental is the, item C, authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding with Douglas County for inter-agency coordination through the Unify Platform, outlining the sharing of data and workflows with defined roles and security safeguards. Ms. Katrina Harley will help us with that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor.
Good evening.
Mayor Pro Tem, City Council. Katrina Harley, Douglas County, E-911 Director. This memorandum of understanding is essentially between E-911 and the Douglas County Sheriff's Office. However, since 911 holds the information for Douglasville Police Department and Douglas County Fire EMS, we wanted to ensure that all partners invested in this and all stakeholders were clear to share information. And so this simply kind of tidies that up.
Okay. That was short and sweet. Okay, do we have any questions or comments? Madam Mayor, you did.
I do, thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. It's good to see you, Director Harley, looking beautiful.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So are we all on the same system when we share the information, or how is that?
So what this does is it allows a computer-aided dispatch to computer-aided dispatch interface, so that the Sheriff's Office can see calls for service for 911, and 911 can see calls for service for the Sheriff's Office. What that does is it allows us to bridge the gap of a more expedient response, since that dispatch center does exist and 911 currently, if calls for service are in unincorporated areas of Douglas County for law enforcement, those calls are then transferred to the Sheriff's Office. And so, but if somebody dials or texts 911, then those 911 operators are first taking in that information. So it will allow the Sheriff's Office to see those calls faster, so that if there is a delay in that transfer, they'll automatically see the calls. And then if there's a need for mutual aid or something of that sort, they'll also see that, so that we can get started faster, instead of toning them out if Douglasville Police Department needs them or if they need Douglasville Police Department. So it just kind of tidies up our emergency services in Douglas County.
Okay, is it helping us to get closer to, I can't remember the name of the?
Next Gen.
Next Gen.
So this is totally separate.
Oh, it is.
Yes, this is. This is just, the county wanted to do this to button up those services between 911 and the Sheriff's Office, and so this is what this application is.
Okay, so that's different from Next Gen.
Yes.
Okay. It sounds like it's helping us get, you know, more unified and.
It helps, yes, ma'am. It helps.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Councilman Estes. I couldn't think of Next Gen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any other questions or comments? I stepped back for a moment and realized that CAD in your world means something very different than CAD in my architectural world.
Yes, computer-aided dispatch.
Okay. All right, well, seeing, I'm gonna go out on a limb and assume that there'll be no objections if I place all three of these items together on the consent agenda. I'm waiting to hear dissent. Okay, we'll make that so.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all we have under the Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee at this time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Director Harley, and our Deputy City Manager, Ms. Jackson, Ms. Chelsea Jackson, for those items. We'll move on then to item number nine, which is Personnel and Organization Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a few items this evening.
Yes, sir.
First up, item 25-464, adopt a resolution authorizing one-time holiday season payments to City of Douglasville employees for 2025. And Ms. Hampton will explain this to us.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This resolution supports a longtime tradition for the city of Douglasville to provide holiday seasonal bonuses to City of Douglasville employees. The amount is the same as last year, and the money has been budgeted into fiscal year '26.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions or comments? I will just say I'm really happy that we are able to provide this for the employees again. They go above and beyond all year, and we are happy to be able to give a little extra around the end of the year for the Christmas season. So seeing no questions or comments, I would like to add this to the consent agenda for Monday and move on to item 25-436, adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign contracts for 2026 city-sponsored employee insurance benefits and to state the anticipated city contribution for each benefit with the following providers. Number one, the Benicon Group, covering stop-loss, Meritane for medical, Admin America for the FSA, DCA, and Cobra, Humana for the Medicare Advantage Plans, Standard Insurance Company for dental vision, employer-paid life, and long-term disability voluntary life and STD, and then ProCareRx/VeracityRx for pharmacy. And we have Ms. Callen, and Ms. Gilder is still here to go through this.
Thank you, Chairman Estes. You've heard the detailed version of the presentation from MSI, and Ashley Gilder here is with MSI. She will go ahead and do a condensed version of the presentation, but I would also like to point to your attention that in your packet, you have a schedule for the education meetings on November 21st and November 22nd, and open enrollment is set to begin December 1st through December 5th. And then I will turn it over to Ms. Gilder to go through her brief presentation, and then we have three additional items after this that are also related. Thank you.
Great. Good evening. Thanks for having me. Again, I will make this less painful this time, but I am, again, with MSI Benefits Group. As the benefits broker for the city, we are ultimately responsible for the overall management, marketing, and services for the employee benefits program. So the city does offer tremendous benefits, a very generous benefits package. However, there are some benefit enhancements that we have identified for your consideration, which we have included in this PowerPoint presentation here. So this is just a rundown of all of the benefits that the city currently offers. The health plan through Meritane, the Medicare Advantage Plan through Humana, and the dental plan through Standard are all up for renewal. However, we have also looked at every other single benefit here, like I said, to identify plan enhancements that we will review here shortly. This is just an overall breakdown of the health plan spend. You'll see last year claims were above where we ideally wanted to see them, producing a loss ratio of 120%. This year, the plan is running more favorably. However, there are some, you know, large claimants of concern that is still leading the underwriters to produce an increase to the health plan. Now, on an annual basis, we do market the health plan. So this includes the listing proposals from all viable options, and our goal is not to change carriers every year, but to really just ensure that we are securing the best and most competitive pricing using those other proposals as leverage, which we have done here for the health plan. So this is a recap here. You see the health plan currently, city paying roughly 3.4 million. Like I said, the health plan, the incumbent carriers did agree to reduce their fixed costs by over 100,000 as the result of negotiations. However, it does still produce an overall increase of 25%. Now, the option that we are proposing here tonight is to renew with Meritane as the medical plan administrator. However, we are proposing that we change the pharmacy benefits program. So instead of CVS Caremark, we're proposing that move to ProCare, also known as VeracityRx. So you'll see here that there is projected claim savings in excess of 400,000 through this move, and we will cover that in the next slide. But it does produce the savings, not only to the plan, but also to members. So the pharmacy savings approach here, it's really derived from three primary buckets. The biggest opportunities, though, are the select and non-select pharmacy network. So employees will still be able to fill their medication at any pharmacy that they would like to. If they go to a select pharmacy, they will have no copay. So instead of the $15 that they're being charged today for. that they're being charged today for generic copay, for generic medications, we're proposing that be changed to zero at select pharmacies. Again, that is any pharmacy outside of four. So the non-select pharmacies are CVS, Target, Walgreens, and Rite Aid. This is simply because they charge more than all the other pharmacies out there. So we're proposing that members who choose to fill their medications at those pharmacies can do so, but they will continue paying the same copay as they do today at that fifteen-dollar generic copay. But again, they will now have the opportunity to pay nothing for their generics by visiting a select pharmacy. The other two big buckets here are going to be the personal importation program and the manufacturer assistance program. These are just for those very high-cost specialty drugs. So there have been eleven members identified for these programs that are on these specialty medications, and the personal importation program allows those medications to be imported from Canada. The exact same medication that members are getting today will arrive in the mail, and they will pay nothing. So instead of paying twenty-five percent up to three hundred and fifty dollars per month, they will pay zero dollars through this program. There's also the manufacturer assistance program, so there are companies set up out there as foundations to provide funding for these very high-cost specialty meds, but you cannot tap into them through a normal health plan arrangement. That is where Veracity comes into play, and they work alongside the member to allow them to access this funding so that, again, they can obtain their high-cost specialty drug at little to no cost. So the biggest thing here is going to be education. Our team will be onsite two days next week for education meetings, and then back out the following week to really explain this process, and proactive outreach will also be made to those identified members so that they can begin that enrollment process for those two programs here. Again, it is eleven members, and the projected savings is in excess of four hundred thousand, and employees will pay nothing for those high-cost specialty drugs. This just further dives down into the projected savings here for the pharmacy with the, like I just said, the updated claims have identified in excess of four hundred thousand. Now, other enhancements that we are proposing are that we remove the Teladoc visit copay. So instead of members being charged thirty dollars or twenty-five dollars for Teladoc, we're proposing that they pay nothing for that, and then removing, of course, that generic drugs copay when visiting a select pharmacy. We are also proposing that we add the nurse line. This will provide members with twenty-four-seven access to a nurse. And then we are proposing a minimal increase to employee deductions. Those employee deductions are illustrated here. This does still assume the seventy-five, twenty-five split. So very generous contribution by the city, with the city continuing to absorb the majority of the increase with the overall average dollar increase to employees being that twenty-nine dollars and thirteen cents. For the flexible spending account and dependent care accounts, we have heard quite a bit of feedback from members who have not had the best experience with MedCom and having cards shut off. So we are proposing that we transition to a different carrier beginning in January to Admin America to hopefully improve that overall experience. We have a large block of business with them, and they have been a tremendous partner of ours. So we will explain that process to employees and, you know, remind them that they will need to make a new FSA election if they wish to continue that benefit. Medicare Advantage, we were able to negotiate this renewal down with Humana to the eleven point six-four percent, again proposing that the city continue to contribute seventy-five percent, producing an overall increase to retirees of sixty, or five dollars per month for retiree only, and an increase of ten dollars for retiree plus spouse. The dental renewal here, so we are proposing that the plan renew with the standard. However, we are recommending that there now be two options offered to employees. This will allow employees to still have the same exact benefit that they have today if they choose to stay enrolled in the basic plan, or they would be allowed to buy up to the buy-up plan, which does have a higher annual maximum, and this would produce an overall increase to the city of the twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, again with the city continuing to cover seventy-five percent of the overall cost. Vision, we are recommending that this change from Anthem to the standard, just in effort to consolidate carriers and have a more positive experience for members. So you'll see here where we are proposing a minimal increase to the benefits, so instead of having a hundred and thirty dollar allowance for elective contacts and frames, we're proposing that be increased to two hundred and fifty dollars. Again, the city will continue the same share that you're contributing today for a four hundred and eighteen dollar increase to the city and a minimal increase to employees for that more improved benefit plan. Employer paid life and disability, this is provided by the city at no cost to employees, and we are recommending that for the life and accidental death and dismemberment benefit, that this be changed to one times employees' annual salary to a maximum of a hundred thousand and a minimum of twenty-five thousand. This will ensure that no member is, receives less than what they have today, with many more benefiting and receiving a higher benefit in the event of a death. We're also proposing that the dependent benefit be increased from one thousand to five thousand for a minimal increase to the city. With the employer paid long-term disability plan, currently, the city provides fifty percent to a maximum monthly benefit to a thousand with a voluntary plan that employees can elect with a higher maximum benefit. We are proposing that we eliminate the voluntary plan and the city cover that higher benefit with the maximum monthly benefit of seventy-five hundred for an overall increase to the city of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Voluntary life and disability, this is one hundred percent employee paid, and you'll see here where we are just proposing that we add the accidental death and dismember benefit to those life benefits. So in the event, you know, of a death, that benefit is doubled for a very small increase to employees, and spouses will also have a higher guaranteed issue at open enrollment. So instead of requiring health questions above thirty thousand, health questions will now just be required above fifty thousand for spouses. So a much better and stronger benefit there. Voluntary short-term disability, we are recommending that benefits start sooner for short-term disabilities, so instead of employees having to wait thirty days, under the new arrangement, they will wait just seven days, and it's actually a decrease to their premium. So I know I went through that much quicker, but hopefully it wasn't too fast. I know it's a lot to digest, but here is just a quick recap of all of the changes we're proposing. Again, the biggest change being the change in the pharmacy benefits. Education will be key, but also removing the Teladoc visit copay, the generic drugs copay, and then adding the nurse line. So a lot of enhancements there with a minimal increase to employees. Flexible spending account and dependent care accounts proposing that move to Admin America. Medicare Advantage Plan renewing at a minimal increase to retirees. Dental plan renewing, offering that dual plan option to give employees choice with a higher annual maximum. And then vision consolidating that to one carrier, so changing it to, to the standard, but increasing the contacts and frames allowances, again for a very minimal increase. Then we move on to the employer paid life and long-term disability, so enhancing the benefits there that are provided to the employees at no cost, and then those minimal changes there with the voluntary life and short-term disability, but adding just a stronger benefit to ensure that employees are properly protected. And then the voluntary Aflac plans will have no changes. So like I said, I know that was a lot, but I am done, that is all I have for you.
Thank you, Ms. Gilder. There were no questions before, so, but we will check again to see if anybody has any questions now. Okay, seeing none. I hope the employees will take advantage of the educational meeting possibilities. There are a few changes, but MSI is great at explaining them, so take advantage of those opportunities. And that being said, I would like to place this on the consent agenda for Monday's meeting, and thank you, Ms. Gilder. Now you don't have to come back on Monday. Okay, we have three more items, and they are almost identical, so Ms. Callen is gonna, can we walk through all of them at once? Since it's just a difference. So first of all, item twenty-five dash four sixty-five, authorize the mayor to sign a letter terminating the city's FSA, DCA, and Cobra Administration Agreement with Medical Cost Containment Services, Inc., effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Item twenty-five dash four sixty-six, authorize the mayor to sign a letter terminating the city's Vision Plan Administration Agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield Healthcare Plan of Georgia, Inc., effective January one, twenty twenty-six. And item twenty-five dash four six seven, authorize the mayor to sign a letter terminating the city's Pharmacy Benefits Administration Agreement with Maritane CVS Caremark, effective January one, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Callen.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Estes. So these three items for MedCom, we are to implement the changes that MSI and staff has recommended. For MedCom, we are going to go to Admin America, so we're terminating the agreement with MedCom. Blue Cross Blue Shield, we're moving to the standard, so terminating the agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield. And then CVS Caremark to Veracity, so terminating the agreement with CVS.
That was easy enough. Any questions or comments from anyone? Seeing none, let's put all three of these items on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you, Ms. Callen. And Madam Mayor, that is all we have for the Personnel and Organization Committee this evening.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the information you've brought forward. Thank you to MSI, Ms. Gilder, and our Assistant City Manager, Ms. Callen. We appreciate you briefing us on these items. We'll move on then to item number ten on the agenda, Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have one item this evening, and that is to refer to the Planning Commission a text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to remove the requirement for special land use permit for short-term rentals. Why can I not say that tonight? Application by the City of Douglasville, Mr. Dana Gray is going to go over this item with us.
Okay.
Good evening, Dana Gray, six-six-nine-five Church Street. So this is an application for a text amendment to remove the requirement for a special land use permit for short-term rentals. We are proposing a stringent permit application along with a business license. This will include inspections of the properties as well. The short-term rental firm our code two point zero-two allowed uses requires a special land use permit for R-two, R-three, R-four, R-five, TCMU, and NRC. If approved, the short-term rental will be allowed in those zoning designations. Most short-term rentals are affiliated with companies like Airbnb, V-Bro, and Expedia, who expedite their bookings. So we have a program called GOV OS that is used for short-term rentals, as well as providing a list of all those who are providing that short-term rental service. This program will allow us to keep track of owners, ensuring that they have our application and business license before they conduct business within the city. So our GOV OS also has a point and pay program, so that when the applicant comes to get that application, they'll be able to pay through GOV OS through point and pay. Those services such as Airbnb and V-Bro will be paying the tourism tax, the hotel motel tax, so that concludes.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Sounds like you guys have done a lot of work to ensure that it's going to be a seamless process. Madam Mayor, Council, do you guys have questions of this?
I do.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Gray. I do have a quick question about the short-term rentals. You said that they have to get a business license.
Yes.
Is there a suspense date? Is it annually renewed, or how is that worked?
Right now, we're doing per year, and it will be renewed. So they will have to renew the business license like they normally do, along with the application.
For the short-term rental?
Yes.
Now, is that inclusive of, like, if anything, I know you said you were gonna do an inspection before, if they have any calls from the police, or that would not be included in that when they do the renewal? You know, sometimes you have people come, and they may have a, we've gotten complaints before about, in subdivisions, where someone had a short-term rental, and there was a party or something, and they got called. Do we have any?
So we're working on certain offenses that can happen, a one-time fee, a second-time fee, so I guess at that time of renewal, we will probably review those, those type of challenges that we have with that particular applicant and weigh in on that application at renewal time.
Okay, good. And so they'll be made aware of that in the beginning if they have infractions, it could be possibly that they won't have, get their license renewed?
That would be part of the application, so they have a list of rules that they have to follow, and they'll be pretty stringent.
All right, 'cause we had, you know, the one lady that came, she had a bunch of rules which were really good to ensure that she had a quality folks come to her short-term.
So our goal is to protect the consumer as well as the community.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gray. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There's no one else. I'm kidding, okay.
A quick question, thank you, Madam Chairman. The annual renewal, is that based on calendar year or off the date of which?
We're gonna follow the, we probably follow the business license pattern. I'm not too sure, I'm not too sure when that starts, but.
I think that's based on the calendar year.
I do believe so.
So, okay, just like the legal license as well, the same thing. Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Beautiful. Well, thank you so much, that was very thorough, and we also went over this in committees. If there's no other questions, I would like to place this on the consent agenda. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all that we have for Planning and Development.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Mr. Gray, and Madam Chairman, woman, you have Public Improvement and Beautification Committee as well.
Yes, ma'am, we do have one item this evening, and that is to appoint Ms. Kendrick to the Keep Douglasville Beautiful Board, post six, to serve a three-year term expiring December thirty-first. Ms. Chelsea Jackson's going to go over this with us.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Chelsea Jackson, six-six-nine-five Church Street. A few weeks ago, myself, Councilwoman Miller, and a few more staff members, we interviewed Ms. Kendrick for the vacant position on the KDB Board. Currently, there are two positions that are vacant, post six and seven. This appointment would appoint her to post six for a three-year term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you, and it was a wonderful interview. One thing that I loved about this applicant is that she's already been volunteering with this specific board, so she's already very familiar with what they do, with their meeting times, and she's really excited to help. So you guys, I absolutely feel like she is a great fit for this board, and if it's okay with you all, I would like to place this on the consent agenda. Madam Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. I just wanted to make a statement. Thank you so much for what you do. While we're sitting here, I got a text from Ms. Gertrude, Brenda Grisham. She says, Adopt a Road Litter Control Gertrudes House Breast Cancer Support Group. She sent a photo of her. She said she just got the sign today, so thank you for KDB for that, too. We appreciate it.
They do such good work.
They do, thanks.
Are there any questions, though, of you guys of this applicant? Are you all okay with placing this one on the consent? Okay, beautiful. Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. Madam Mayor, that's all that we have this evening for Public Improvement and Beautification.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Deputy City Manager. We'll move on then to the next committee, is item number twelve, which is Public Relations Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Hi, it's Sam, thank you.
You're welcome, Councilman Davis. We'll move on to Public Safety Committee. The vice chair is Councilmember Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We have three items tonight.
Yes, sir.
We're keeping Ms. Jackson busy. Item A is adopt an ordinance to amend section ten dash two C-five of the city's Code of Ordinances to update the open container rules within the city's entertainment district. And Ms. Jackson, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Watts. Good afternoon again, Chelsea Jackson, Deputy City Manager. If you all recall, a few weeks ago, I came before council and committees for this discussion. So this item is to adopt the ordinance to amend the current process of enacting the open container district. If approved, the proposed ordinance would eliminate the application process for the entertainment district and would allow the district to be open without permit from eleven AM to eleven-thirty PM daily. Any beverage being removed from an establishment in the downtown area would be in a transparent plastic cup to not exceed sixteen ounces and one per person. Also, the subsequent item twenty-five dash four-three-three addresses the expansion of the map as well in the entertainment district area, and that's one thing that was discussed as well in your committees a few weeks ago. as well in the entertainment district area, and that's one thing that was discussed as well in your committees a few weeks ago as well. And like I said, it expands the map within that downtown region.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any questions or comments from council? Yes, Madam Mayor?
I had a quick comment. Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I was not able to go to Huntsville. I was in Ohio, but I understand in Huntsville, they had purple cups. So, clear cups, you can have some Sprite in the clear cup. I guess you can have in a purple cup, too. But that really, I guess the color of a cup would signify that it's alcohol rather than having a clear cup. Could we change the color, or are we just gonna keep it clear?
Well, staff did research. So we did go to Huntsville, and they did have purple cups as part of their entertainment district and part of their advertising and marketing for their entertainment district. As it relates to looking around throughout the state, most cities just do a clear, transparent cup, just so you can properly see through it. We looked at cities such as Smyrna, Decatur, Shambly, and a few more within the metro region, and they all use the clear plastic cup. Anyone removing a cup or wanting to remove an alcoholic beverage from a restaurant, they would need to show their ID to that bartender or to someone in that establishment before they're able to receive a clear plastic cup. And then the cup does not come with a lid or anything on it. Most to-go drinks, if they're not, if they're non-alcoholic, do come with a lid on top of it and a straw, but this one would not come with a lid or straw, therefore to prevent them from transporting in their car or transporting for a long period of time.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. The other thing was eleven AM to eleven-thirty PM every day, seven days a week?
Yes, ma'am. So currently, and that's not a, that's not a new change. So currently, your entertainment district allows for open containers for those times as well, from eleven AM to eleven-thirty PM. This would just remove the overall application process for the permit and having those applicants come before you all every time they want to enact an entertainment district. And it eliminates a lot of staff work. And going back to the purple cups as well, that would be a cost on the city as well as on staff to continue to replenish all those cups within the entertainment district area.
Okay, so it's just in the entertainment district?
Yes, ma'am, just within that area.
So it's not all over. Okay, and eleven o'clock on Sunday?
Yes, ma'am, eleven-thirty PM.
Ooh, wait.
And that's the current time.
For all on brunch places.
That's true. Champagne for something. Okay, okay. That's all I got. That's all. I'll just ask it a question. They're coming at me. Come on.
Any, either, any other comments?
I've been pushing for this since the first day I got on council, but, yes, we were just in Huntsville, and it works really, really well. And, you know, people did not abuse it. They, you know, it really was just if you were finished and you had a little bit of your drink left, you would take it with you. It's not like people are going out and having a party in the street, so I think it's a great thing.
If I remember correctly, they also had a label on the cups, did they not, in Huntsville?
They had. It was just the purple cup.
No, and they, they had a wide range of different cups, too.
Maybe it was the company, or the bar's name.
They, they all had signs in the front windows that purple cups available here.
I thought they had their names on them or something like that.
Any other, any other comments? I mean, I've got a question or two, but I just wanted to see council had any other questions. Just, just out of curiosity, how, how, what is the benefit, the pros and cons, just for those that might wonder?
Yeah, so enacting an entertainment or having it open between these hours without having the application, it establishes culture downtown, increase of business profit in the downtown area. What we've seen when I spoke to the cities such as Shambly and Smyrna and Decatur is their businesses love it because it drives them to be able to sell more and to put people, of course, into their restaurants. But of course, not necessarily if their restaurants are busy. People still are allowed to come in, grab a drink. They can wait with their drink outside or walk around while they're waiting for their reservation to come in. But it does increase business and traffic in the downtown, and as well as, an example from Huntsville was they took everyone on a art walk. So they were able to walk around, just see the beauty of the downtown area, as well as see different art pieces throughout that area as well, just to grow visibility in that downtown area.
And my, my next question is for Deputy Chief. When we have an event now, open container type event, is there any particular focus on the fact that that event is going on downtown as opposed to now it's eleven to eleven, basically, seven days a week? So in other words, when we have an event, they, it's been approved by council, do y'all have any more focus downtown on an event like that as opposed to what's being proposed?
Well, sir, we, we made the officers aware of it when there was an event, but there haven't been any problems associated with it, so we don't really have any extra patrols, per se, going on at the time.
Yes, Ms. Jackson?
Councilman Watts, if I can add to that as well, if there is a large event, like an event that would trigger a special event permit, then the Deputy Chief also is privy to that information, and so they already offer police officers to events of that magnitude. So we would know if there was, for example, Chili Cook Off or Taste of Douglasville, they would, the entertainment district would already be open for this, but that would be something that we're already gone through a lot of our departments to ensure the safety of that event as well as of our residents and businesses.
And I'm assuming this would apply also to concerts where alcohol is served.
Yes.
Downtown, okay. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Davis?
Yes, one good thing, you can sit on the plaza and have lunch and have your glass of wine, or you can sweet communion. You're good to go.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Jackson. Moving on to item B, adopt a resolution to amend the Ward Two downtown entertainment district map. Ms. Jackson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Councilman Watts. Afternoon again, Mayor and Council. Of course, this establishes boundaries within the downtown area to expand the Ward Two or downtown district entertainment map. This includes all of the restaurants within the downtown area, as well as the Town Green area. But of course, it also includes the new development that's coming beside the Town Green that would have commercial as well.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any questions or comments on this particular item?
I, I do. I'm trying to look at the map. Is Hudson's included?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know before it stopped at a certain, thank you.
I just want, I, Mr. Chair, I have one quick. I also noticed it does not include the new CAC location. Was there any discussion of incorporating the new CAC?
Yes, so much like we're amending the map currently, so once the CAC, Cultural Arts Council, their new building comes online, we can always come back in months or a few years when it comes online, so we can see what exactly it all entails and include it into that downtown district map.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Any other questions or comments before I move on to the next item? All right, item C, adopt a resolution to establish the Ward Five Entertainment District and approve the district map, Exhibit A, allowing open containers daily from eleven to eleven-thirty within district boundaries. So that's not a separate request for that open container, eleven to eleven-thirty. It's assuming that the other was approved, then that would apply to this.
Yes, so for this item, this is establishing an entertainment district within the Ward Five area. And attached is also the map, so you can see the bounds of the entertainment district that we're proposing within Ward Five. The establishment of this entertainment district in the Ward would be the same process as Ward Two, as stated, Councilman Watts. So eliminate the application process and having individuals come before you all to enact it. And of course, it would, the district would allow the purchase and removal of open containers of alcoholic beverages on any day between the hours of eleven AM and eleven-thirty PM. And the proposed map currently encompasses all of the restaurants within that resia tributary area, including the small amphitheater and entertainment space. And then, as stated before, as other restaurants come within the next year, month, staff will come and of course, continue to amend the map and expand those bounds.
Okay. Councilman Estes, that, the map, that pink area, what does that entail down there right now?
It is, I mean, there's a pizza place.
Right.
And there's a coffee shop, and there is a Mexican restaurant going in. But the majority of that pink area is a little park that's in between all of these current and future businesses. And that is a big gathering space for the entire area. So it makes sense for people to be able to walk out from, you know, Twisted Pie and bring their drink out and sit in the little park. So, again, this is a great idea.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Quick one, yeah. Councilman Estes, it does not look like it's including, though, that little shopping center where the Mexican place is going in currently, though, is it?
But it's not, I don't think it's including. Well, it is.
It doesn't, because I think that's that gray block between Riverside and the parking area.
Well, that's true. This from Market Street to Riverside.
That's correct. So currently.
But there's nothing there right now.
There's nothing there right now, so.
So, when those are open, that can be extended down.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. I'd like to place item B and C on the consent agenda, but if it would be okay to keep item A where it is. All right. And anybody have any questions about that? All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor, that's all we had tonight under public safety.
Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Chair. You've done such a wonderful job. You can take the next committee, Recreation, Culture, and Tourism. Chairboard Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items tonight. Reappoint Jason Post, Community Relations Director, as the City of Douglasville's representative to serve a three-year term on the Board of Directors of the Cultural Arts Council of Douglasville, Douglas County, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight. Anybody have any comments or questions on that? Well, Ms. Jackson, go ahead.
Yes, just quickly. So Jason Post has served on the CAC for one year currently. So how their bylaws read is for the city seat, you must serve a one-year term first, and then you will have the option to be reappointed for a three-year term. So I've heard nothing but great things from Ms. Emily Lightner regarding Jason Post being on the CAC. And he, I didn't volunteer him to be reappointed, but, I mean, he said, yes, he enjoys being on the CAC. So I think it's a great addition to continue having him serve.
All right. So, so you didn't have to get him kicking and screaming. He, he, he said it was okay?
He just said yes. And it was quick, within like three minutes, he responded to me.
All right, any questions? All right, we'll, we'll place that on the consent agenda for Monday. Item B, reappoint Patty Wink. Did I say that right?
Wink.
Wink. At-large post, Emily Lightner's CAC post, John Penn's C, City post, to the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau Board for a two-year term, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven. And, Ms. Jackson?
Yes, so currently, Ms. Patty Wink and Emily Lightner are serving, one is serving an at-large post and the other is serving in a CAC post. They'd be like to be reappointed to their current post. Currently, Mr. Penn is serving in an at-large post, but those at-large posts are created at the will of the Mayor and Council. And currently, the CVB Board is probably about fourteen people, so we try at certain times to remove some of those at-large seats. So since we do have a city post and it's currently vacant, Mr. Penn has agreed to move into that city post since he is one of the assistant directors for Parks and Recreation. And they all will serve a two-year term, expiring December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Any questions from council, comments? All right, well, we'll place that a consent agenda for Monday. And, Madam Mayor, that's all we had under Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to our Deputy City Manager for bringing these items to our attention. We appreciate citizens and staff willing to serve in these positions. It really is, it helps us to govern better, to keep eyes and ears in these ancillary groups that are part of the city. So thank you, Mr. Post, for CAC, and Ms. Wink, Ms. Lightner, and Mr. Penn for serving on the community, the Douglasville Convention and Visitors Bureau. We really appreciate that. I will move on to Technology Committee. Councilmember Elena Hudson, would you mind taking Technology and Transportation Committees for me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee this evening, and we have no business under the Transportation Committee this evening.
Thank you so much. You're welcome. Item seventeen is other business. We do have announced and enter into an official minutes of this meeting the certified results of the Tuesday, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five City of Douglasville General Election for four seats of the Douglasville City Council, Ward One, Ward Two, Post One, Ward Three, Post One, and Ward Three, Post Two. And we'll have our Assistant City Clerk, Ms. Candace James, to announce those wonderful winners of those seats.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So I will be announcing the certified election results for the City of Douglasville General Election, November fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. So for Ward One, we have Councilmember Terry Miller, Terry S. Miller, who was unopposed and received one hundred percent of the votes. Ward Two, Post One, Councilmember Nicole Newborn Miller received sixty-point-fifteen percent of the votes. Barney W. Young, Jr. received thirty-nine-point-eighty-five percent of the votes. Ward Three, Post One, DeVetreon D. Caldwell received seventy-point-eighty percent of the votes. And Tyrone E. Barmore received twenty-nine-point-twenty percent of the votes. And then we have Ward Three, Post Two, with Councilmember Sam Davis, who was unopposed and received one hundred percent of the votes.
Thank you so, thank you so much, Ms. Assistant City Clerk. Congratulations to Mayor Pro Tim and Councilman S, I mean, Councilman Davis for their being unopposed and coming back. The reelection of Councilmember Nicole Miller, and to Councilmember-elect, Mr. DeVetreon Caldwell, who we look forward to joining us in January and moving the city forward. So congratulations to all of those individuals elected. Let's give them a hand. Wonderful, wonderful. So we'll just vote on that on Monday. Ms. James, is this the City Manager, or how do we? We just read it into the minutes? Okay, very good. Updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dotson.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney Dotson. Staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan.
No business, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our Police Department Deputy Chief, J.R. Davison.
No business, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And our City Manager, Ms. Marsha Hampton.
Yes, ma'am. I have no business other than to say congratulations to those who were elected. Got a lot of work going on.
I know, lots of work, lots of work. Before I have our comments from citizens and delegates, I would like to make a statement about our new City Hall. I know we had some items earlier on the agenda to help us with the adjoining businesses and buildings. We definitely were taken to consideration. We've had some comments about the City Hall and the historic value of the sixty-six ninety-five Church Street, where we currently have offices for administration and executive staff in some of the departments. We will certainly try to be sensitive to the past while we forge in the future. So we look forward to having some artifacts and just, you know, moving the city forward. We do need new buildings for City Hall. We are, we are busting at the seams. We have not had a new building, and we tried to retrofit it when I first came to council in two thousand and one. But I don't even know how old the building is. How old is the building, City Manager? Mr. Dotson? Uh-oh, here we go. It was built in the forties? Oh, my gosh. And I know it was of Fowler Theater before, and.
It was a movie theater and clothing store owned by the Amneals.
Oh, wow. Wow, so we'll make certain that we have all of that information, and we'll have some artifacts and make certain that we pay homage to the past, standing on the shoulders in the foundation of the building, but moving forward. You have something, Mayor Pro Tim?
No, I'm just, I would echo what you said. I mean, I think what people don't realize is, number one, to your point, the city desperately needs better office space for its employees because it's not acceptable, the conditions they're working in now. But secondly, as much as we respect those older buildings, they've long since lost their historic value. They've been chopped up so many times, and there's been so many alterations that there really is no history to those buildings in their current state. And so that's, we're not really losing much by replacing those buildings.
Yeah, it'll be something.
Hopefully, we'll have even better, newer, better architecture in the future. Hopefully, we'll have even better, newer, better architecture in the future when we get to our new city hall.
That's right.
That'll be a landmark.
Yes, it's something people can be proud of. Yeah, Councilwoman Watts?
Not to mention the cost of renovating, which we looked at, would have been as, almost as much as a new building.
Yeah, we did look at, part of your evaluation a couple of years ago was connecting those buildings, staying where it was existing. And by the time you were to do that, it was just not going to be cost-effective. There's various elevations in those buildings. As the Mayor Pro Tim mentioned, many of those buildings have been renovated, retrofitted. You would not recognize where they were. I mean, we've done a lot of things to accommodate about a hundred and fifty people in three buildings.
And so, it'll, by the end of the year, everyone should be moved out, and we'll start at the top of the year. Mayor Pro Tim, you have something else?
I'm just saying, those buildings were never designed to be city hall, public offices. They have no practical use for that in that sense. So, that's why I think the new city hall will be a true landmark for the future of our city, so.
Yeah. Hopefully, the community will be proud of the new city hall. But again, we will certainly make certain that we pay respect and honor to the buildings that they were before in some manner. Anything else for the good of the body? Okay. Not having comments from citizens and delegates. If you sustain the meeting and you'd like to speak to us, please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. And you have five minutes to talk to us about any business remain to the City of Douglasville. I don't see any takers, as you used to say, Councilwoman Davis. We do have our deputy, I mean, not our deputy chief, our chief, our fire chief here, Dr. Miles Allen. Thank you, Chief, for coming to the meeting. If we don't have any other business, this meeting is adjourned.